Thank you.
Happy birthday, Beth.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, December tenth. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order, and Krista, if you'd like to please call the roll.
Councilmember Soltes.
Here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Herzog.
Here.
Councilmember Herdhausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Prokhem Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Reiner.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thanks, Krista. Everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much, and before we proceed. Let's see. Blue one goes over here, correct? Oh, and the green one goes down here. We have two birthdays today. Want to make sure, somebody made a comment a while ago about having a long meeting, so we're going to make sure it's a very long meeting tonight. But anyway, um, so want to say happy birthday to both Beth and Joe, and if everybody would like to join me in singing. So, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Beth and Joe. Happy birthday to you. And no, there's no time for speeches. Congratulations. Another trip around the sun.
Thank you all.
Well, thank you for being here on your, uh, special night, so, and no, we're not going to make it a very long meeting. With that, we'll move to approval of agenda. Before you, we have the amended uh, city council agenda, which now includes new business item number four. Uh, Regan, is there any other changes tonight?
No other changes, Mayor.
Okay. Look for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. And my iPad is taking over. Um, let's see, we have no public communication tonight. And public comment, this is our first two. Looks like we have a full house tonight. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom or dial star six to unmute by phone. Please notice that campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate at City Hall or during council meetings, including public comments, is prohibited by state law RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. And seeing nobody in the audience, is there anybody online wishing to address council this evening? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, I will close this public comment period, and we will have a second opportunity towards the end of our meeting. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C nine.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next is new business item number one. Consider an ordinance adopting the two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-four Covington Comprehensive Plan. Selena?
We're here. We made it. We had a deadline of December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, and here we are tonight. Um, so council, we have a pretty detailed agenda item here. We have talked about the comprehensive plan for the last two years. The planning commission has dedicated a lot of time. Um, the public that has participated with us along the way has given us great feedback. Um, and so the document that you have before you tonight is the plan that we we will be submitting to Puget Sound Regional Councils, the count, if the council so chooses to take that action this evening. Um, from there, it will be reviewed by the growth management board at PSRC, and hopefully we will be getting a certification of the plan by Q one of two thousand twenty-five. Um, that will make us eligible for grants and also solidify our comp plan as meeting the state requirements for GMA. There's a lot inside of that document. There's everything from our housing needs assessment that's going to inform our HB eleven-ten work, our middle, missing middle housing. Um, there's the climate vulnerability, or sorry, the climate action, sorry, climate vulnerability assessment. Um, that's in there with eleven-eighty-one. That's going to start informing more comprehensive plan work that we already have underway as we have to adopt it. A separate climate element by June of two thousand twenty-five next year. Um, and then you have your best available science appendix in the back there. That's going to feed forward into the critical areas ordinances, updates that are going to have to be adopted by December of two thousand twenty-five next year. Um, in addition to just all of that hefty data analysis in there, we've got our capital projects um, that kind of pave the way for how Covington can accommodate our growth targets. Um, our new housing units expected at four thousand three hundred ten, ten um, over the next twenty years. So there's a lot of detail in that plan, a lot of data in the plan. Most importantly, it's the goals and policies, so that helps staff drive forward any type of legislative changes we have to make to our code, which then, as you know, that translates into what actually happens in the constructed and built environment. So, um, it's a dense plan. There's a lot of detail to it. It feels really great to be at this point, and I, at this point, Mayor, if there's questions, I'll take them. Otherwise, I will hand this back to the council.
Great. Thank you, Selena. Does council have any questions for Selena tonight? I have one. If we don't pass it tonight, what is the consequences?
Well, that's a great question. I did ask PSRC, um, if we were to take action in January, make some other changes, and let's say we aimed for January and February, we will still be ahead of half the cities in King County. So, and I don't know what that looks like on a statewide. Um, I had a meeting today. There's a lot of cities that are really trying to get this across the finish line. Um, there will really be no dire consequence because I think we'll be in process. Um, and I don't think there's any grants we're going to be going for in that first month of January, so, um, we'll be okay, but we'll definitely want to.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that we won't approve it. I just.
Yeah.
Beth, you had a question?
Yeah, it was just about the twenty-fifty growth target because you know, their, their comment was that we need to maybe even increase our housing even further for that next five years and you know, um, representing folks that are concerned about the amount of growth in this area, more specifically about infrastructure and degradation of our green spaces. And so I know that there's the going up. We've talked about like higher density on what's already been developed, but where do we land? Where are we going to be with that for next steps?
There's still conversation about reevaluating growth targets, so there hasn't been anything that's come down to me at like the director level that says we're going to undertake this in two thousand twenty-five or two thousand twenty-six. Um, I know that's a big concern, and, and I will just say historically, um, having worked on the growth, the urban growth targets, buildable lands, I've been around a while. Um, inevitably, if you were to pull those statistically, the suburban cities always far exceed their growth every year. And very rarely do we see the larger cities meeting those targets. Um, it's anticipated, I think, in the last buildable lands, which informs this, Covington was like a hundred and forty percent over our last buildable target. Um, that is, I think, going to continue to trend upward, right? I think, um, growth is going to occur. I, I, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't tell you that. I think that priorities around green space, storm water, critical areas, transportation, quality of life, those are going to become larger, bigger conversations moving forward, um, you know, but as with all things of change and all things of growth, right, we've got good plans in place, right? The council is very aligned on vision, mission, goals, strategy, action plans, all of that stuff's woven in as we have these conversations. Um, so I don't really have a great answer for you, Beth, as far as like what that will look like. The short answer is I anticipate they're gonna check and adjust us. Um, probably in that year five timeline, fully expecting that. What that looks like as far as how things shake out and where we land in that audit, I'll call it. I don't know what they're going to do. I don't think they know what that's going to look like.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Before us tonight is to potentially pass an ordinance of substantial form. Is that attached here too, to approve and adopt the new two thousand twenty-four, two thousand forty-four Covington Comprehensive Plan and repeal the two thousand fifteen Covington Comprehensive Plan and all amendments thereafter. Does council wish to take action?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Christina, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think so much has been said, and I'm just really proud of the fact that we get to kind of spearhead the the state. I mean, we're always I'm, I'm always so proud of our staff. Efficiency is an understatement, um, but to be to be done before December and um, meet the deadline and, and create such a comprehensive and amazing document is just, I, I'm really glad that we have the people that we have.
Thank you, Christina. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
At nine hundred and eighty pages, I will tell you that there's a couple paragraphs I missed. But I will tell you that and they may have been towards the end when everything started bleeding together, but I will say that this is a two years of hard work, two years of work that we have had to do because we were told to. But they were two years of work that are going to tell us our future, help us with our future. And I believe that with everything that is going to be happening in the next decade plus of Covington, this is a great roadmap to get us there. Yeah, we'll have to come back and visit in a few years and make some, probably make a couple changes. Hopefully it's just, hey, we need to put a comma here instead of, we need to remove this whole section and redo it. But I am thankful to all the work that you've done, and I am looking forward to, uh, starting to get those grants.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Sean?
Yeah, I'll just echo what, uh, has already been said. I appreciate the city's efforts um, to getting us where we are. Um, I also appreciate that, uh, there is a will in this state to do comprehensive management. Um, I've lived in other states where there isn't, and it's uh, at least for me, it's, it's evident the impact that not planning has on quality of life. Um, you're going to stumble into something if you're not planning. Um, and I know it's a lot of work, and sometimes we don't always agree with what the plans require us to do, but um, I think the only way you really can get to a better future is if you have some goal, and a goal requires a plan and strategies in order to get there, so um, I'm looking forward to seeing how this better shapes the future of Covington, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Debbie?
Thank you. I just also want to thank Selena, your team, and the planning commission for all the work that's gone into this. It isn't just that we met the deadline, it's with a lot of quality as well. And, um, I had a conversation back in September with Selena around the fact that we don't have the transportation in place to build a lot of this, the needed housing around, and so it's going to be chicken and egg at some point where we can't build it with no transportation and no transit, so I guess we'll just see how that plays out. Anyway, thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against? All right. Been moved and seconded to pass an ordinance in substantial form. Is that attached here too? To approve and adopt the new two thousand twenty-four to two thousand forty-four Covington Comprehensive Plan and repeal the two thousand fifteen Covington Comprehensive Plan and all amendments amendments thereafter. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance passes. Congratulations. Thank you for all the hard work. And please pass on our thanks to the, uh, your entire team and the planning.
Yes, they, they will all give
Thank you. Next is new business item number two. Consider an ordinance adopting the two thousand twenty-five operating and capital budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so I'm pleased to present, Council, to you our two thousand twenty-five, uh, capital and operating budget for adoption. Uh, this, uh, as you know, we've held several public hearings. We had our budget workshop, uh, multiple deliberations, and all of that brought us to the culmination of what's before you tonight. Um, there are a couple, this budget before you does look a little bit different, though, than what we first presented at the budget workshop, namely, uh, the decisions that council made, uh, at that workshop on the reductions. Some of those larger ones, just to refresh memories, our reduction to transfer to street fund, removal of a code compliance officer position. We reduced the projected reconciliation for our police contract and a reduction of concerts in the parks. We went down from three events to one. There's also a couple slight changes on the revenue side. There's a ten thousand dollar increase to the park bench dedication fund, and then the thirty thousand dollars that, uh, council discussed earlier about, uh, property taxes. So that's what's before you tonight. Uh, I just want to thank Casey and her team, all staff that participated in the budget, and then, of course, you, Council, for, um, putting together a budget that's sustainable moving into the future. So we're happy to take any questions if you have them.
Does council have any questions tonight? All right, before us is to potentially pass an ordinance in substantial form. Is that attached here too? Adopting the two thousand twenty-five operating and capital budget. Your motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
We get the budget to look at in October, knowing having a vague idea of what's in there. We, we know there's going to be talks about the parade. There's going to be talks about our parks. There's going to be talks about what we do here at the, uh, the dais, you know, things for that. Um, but every year we have to really look at it and see, are these the ways we still want to go? And every year, city staff brings to us a budget that in reality, we can't complain about. It is so good. It makes sure that everything we need is there. It gives us our options of what we could do, what we maybe shouldn't do, what, what's one direction we could take, was there another way we could go? And there's always room to discuss everything. We may not agree on everything on, in the budget. We may not think that we need, you know, two million dollars to go plant new trees along in the medians of the street. Uh, these are numbers I'm just throwing out there. They necessarily, that's right there. Numbers aren't, these numbers are not in front of me, so, but if we have, but, you know, we may, but we all agree that we need those trees there. So it's just a matter of where can we, what can we all agree to live with? And every year, the city staff writes a budget that is easy for us to understand, easy for us to make comments on, and easy enough for us to ensure that it's going to be beneficial for the people of the city, and I am very thankful for it, and I think this is a great budget. And I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do in the next year, and hopefully not have to worry about trying to find things we don't need and that we can't have in the budget anymore.
Thanks, Joe. Your second, please.
Yes, thank you. Um, well, I agree with what Joe said, and I appreciate that, um, finance, Regan staff, um, bring a budget to us, um, having already looked at some of the uh, the things that we, you know, could do without or the things that we should add. Um, I think in the end, we approved a budget that um, we were, we were prudent with, um, the money that we're entrusted uh, with by our residents. Um, I believe that we're spending their tax dollars appropriately. Um, I think that we made difficult decisions, but the right decisions, and I, I think we all feel good about what we're approving.
Thank you, Debbie. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Sean?
I'll go first.
Use your hand up.
Um, again, same, um, second time, I'll say I appreciate the city's management of our budget, and it's funny, this year more than others, I am reminded in getting, uh, uh, examples of cities that are in tougher straits than we are. Um, you know, Sp- cities like Spokane and Seattle, although much bigger than us, you know, looking to happen to cut tens of millions of dollars from their budget, you know, without the fund balances in order to to offset that. The state is looking at a ten billion dollar deficit over the next ten years. Uh, just read that Edmonds is considering dissolving their police department, um, to, in a cost-saving measure and contracting with the county, so you know, we, we, like Joe mentioned, it was we had a conversation, and it's the first time in years that we've actually had to cut things, but this thing is far less painful, I believe, to our residents than it is for other residents, and, and it's in large part due to the management of our, our city staff, but also, you know, basically forecasting and being prudent on thinking about how future trends could change. So I'm grateful for that, um, and really do appreciate it, and, uh, um, going to support this budget as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Beth?
Yeah, I, it's, it's always interesting because, again, you guys, the staff does a great job, and I, I really appreciate. I, you know, I like to have all options out, and, and we kick out what doesn't work, and, you know, you can always do three different things, and some people are going to like one, and some people are going to like others, and there's going to be some things that nobody wants, so it's always challenging when we do these types of budgets because we're looking at what we need, what we need to, what we need for, for basic running our government, what we need to to augment people's quality of life here, but not just now, in the future. And we're always going to have to come back and, and make some of these hard decisions. It's just, that's kind of the nature of the beast when you have um, limited resources, and a lot of people want a lot of different things. So I mean, I appreciate all of the dialogue and the, the interaction that we've had over this, and, you know, to your point, we've had even just smaller cities that are, you know, three or four cities over, having to cut staffing positions because they can't, you know, afford, um, it, programs, and so I'm thankful that we didn't have to do that, and, you know, that's never really our goal, the idea to be solvent enough, so certainly appreciate where we're at right now, and it's never easy, and I'm sure there's people that are going to go, why did you fund a, I don't know, fill in the blank, and we'll have those conversations throughout the year, you know, and it's always good to lick your thumb and stick it in the wind and just see if we're still on the right track, right? That's just part of self-reflection as a city, so, but I appreciate all the work and, um, that we were able to, to balance things out, so, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? I just want to say thank you for once again to you, Regan, the entire leadership team for presenting a very fiscally responsible budget. And, um, echoing what Sean and Beth said, there was a time when we had to a long time ago, where we had to make some very drastic cuts here at City Hall. And, uh, I'm just glad that we are not experiencing like a fifty-two percent property tax increase in City to the north.
Yeah.
So, um, but, so thank you. It's, it's a pleasure to represent this city with an elite staff that we have, so thank you. Anybody else? All right, it's been moved and seconded to pass an ordinance in substantial form. Is that attached here too? Adopting the two thousand twenty-five operating and capital budget. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance passes. Thank you very much. Next is new business item number three. Consider a resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-five City of Covington fee schedule and repealing the two thousand twenty-four fee schedule, and Kelly is joining us online.
Kelly is joining us online tonight, but I told her I would do the presentation, and she will just keep me in check. You know, as she does very well. Um, so thank you for being here remotely, Kelly. Um, so this is our annual, uh, adoption of our fee resolution, um, for two thousand twenty-five. Um, for the most part, the fee resolution was pretty straightforward this year. There's kind of just some things I want to point out that, um, that were applied or that we're going to do a little different going into two thousand twenty-five. So first and foremost, we adopt, um, the CPI, um, from June of two thousand twenty-three to June of two thousand twenty-four as our percentage for how much we raise fees. So for, um, for Covington, that was three point three, three point three-six percent was applied to all of the fees, so the two thousand twenty-four fees were raised by that percentage. That brings our hourly rate up to about a hundred and ninety-one dollars an hour. Um, why does that matter? That's kind of what we use to determine how much something costs. So if something takes staff three hours to do, we use that hourly rate times three, that helps us get a fee for that, right? Um, the other big thing that we did this year was take the fee resolution and really made it more robust. So some things that have come to light, um, in the last year is that we really didn't have a fee resolution policy. We have this resolution, but it referred to a policy, and then there was no policy, so we, we worked together, um, with legal to make sure that this fee resolution is actually the policy by which the city does cost recovery with the desire that development pays for development. So that language in there has has been modified to kind of make that more clear, should we be asked the question. Um, and all of that is valid under the RCWs. RCW allows cities to recoup costs for development. Um, that, that is allowed to us in the statute, so the other thing too that we did was that there's a, a new spreadsheet, so there's, there's this probably not for you, but for us, um, Kelly has kind of year over year just slid over to the next column, and that has gotten quite crazy, so we said this year, let's just start fresh. It's a good year, comp plan year, everything's two thousand twenty-five, so it'll be a little bit better, newer look this year refreshed. But the larger, um, item that is changing in here is how we're going to do consultant pass-through. And as you read in the, um, the blue sheet, you know, the city currently collects lots of fees for a project, okay? And we've always collected an upfront fee for our consulting fees, and I'm going to particularly talk about engineering. That is our largest contract. So Parti- provides city development review engineer services to us. I don't have an engineer in my department that looks at projects, right? And so that contract that we carry with them is a pretty hefty contract. And the goal with that is to meet a cost recovery of our costs, so what we're expending development should be reimbursing us for that. So last year, we were noticing that that wasn't happening, so we made some shifts and some changes. We checked and adjusted ourselves this year, and we were still coming up short. So we did a little bit of a, you know, process improvement assessment for ourselves and asked us, uh, the question of like, why is this happening? What, what is going on? And so there was a few challenges that got raised as part of this. So right now, the way that the engineering fee works is that they pay a dollar amount, like, you know, and that gets them two rounds of review, meaning that the engineer will look at it twice. And then after that, you will get passed through, but ideally, your project should be close to being approved, right? We shouldn't be in these massive cycles. One thing that we're starting to see more and more, and this isn't all developers, there's some that are really great. They do get in here in those two rounds. There's others that just kind of do what we call design by review. And that means that they come in with the bare minimum. They let us tell us everything that's wrong with it. We, they let us tell us all the chapters and verses that apply to them. And then they go back and they revise their, their plan. That's a lot of work for us, right? That's kind of like turning an incomplete work, and then your teacher's writing the essay for you. And so the way that we were structured, though, it was kind of difficult for us to go back and say, well, you need to pay us more, you're using more of our time. So, um, we would still do that, but now we're having for thirty-plus projects determine when those reviews are happening, how many reviews they've gone through, and then Kelly is, and Jasmine are doing these massive amounts of spreadsheets to go get the developer to reimburse it. So not only were we doing a lot of review work, now we're doing a ton of administrative work, right? And so as a team, we kind of went back and said, how can we make this simpler? And the team said it would just be easier to pass that through. So they will pay for the service that they get at the time that they get it, so that makes our budget a little bit more aligned. The cost is being expended, right? The revenue is coming back in. And then when they start to find out that they're going to get charged every time they want to do design by review, maybe that's an incentive for them to maybe rethink how they want to submit those plans, right? Which, as you know, can have a cascade of Which, as you know, can have a cascade effect to just even efficiencies with staff being responsive to projects and project timelines. So we were able to actually do this big change because we have that shared admin. This is something we had talked about for a while, but the administrative aspect of this is still gonna be work. Not as nuanced, but now we can alleviate Kelly's role of doing that and now we have an admin that can help take that on, so then Kelly can do. The permit side of things that she's really good at doing and running the permit center. Um, there's a couple other just minor challenges that come up that I'll just address really quick. Um, construction inspections, that's really where we were seeing the biggest dip, so. Again, we anticipate you're gonna come in, it's a project as normal because we take that average time, but now projects are getting harder and more complicated. What's left is difficult, we've got difficult soils or something doesn't work or they don't want to be responsive. And again, we're kind of burning through that cost. And then billing it out, but also that construction timeline can last anywhere from one to three years. So if I'm collecting fees in year one and they're using that time, right? There's sometimes a point where those numbers don't align. Our consultant rates have gone up. And our fee isn't covering that cost fully and then again, now we're in this like tracking, so moving towards um. A system particular for construction fees, we're gonna be taking an estimate, we have a bond quantity worksheet that they do an estimate on. Twenty percent of that fee will go towards the staff time that we take, the planner's time for construction review. Eighty percent of that will be for the construction um inspector will do a drawdown. And then at that point, then they will move into actual costs. So that was a little, like that little chunk of fees is different. Otherwise, all the rest of the fee processes, so application. Flat fee pass through, right? Engineering, flat fee pass through, construction, we'll do a little bit of a down, drawdown. And then final pass through and um s- flat fee. Hopefully that makes sense. I have a picture here if it's helpful, but. Um, so as part of setting up a program like that, which a lot of cities of our size have, right? Newcastle does it, Maple Valley does it. Um, Sammamish does this, a lot of the smaller cities like us um have been doing this for a while, so we reached out to them and got some feedback. Some of them do a deposit drawdown, we didn't really want to do that yet, we weren't ready to approach that with our friends in finance. And so you will see in the resolution though that it does offer us the ability, should we have developers that aren't paying on time or we start to see a. A collection or a pushback on on that, then we'll go to a deposit program. But we're gonna assume good intent under this first, this first effort. Um, and really, at the end of the day. There's kind of two things that we're driving for. One is is that our budget, development services budget varies year over year. Right? And it and it goes up and down. And we really want to make sure that we are not absorbing the cost of development, right? So I've got lots of op, I've got lots of examples where we've been paid late, eighteen months later. Thousands of dollars of outstanding fees, we're actually auditing all the projects right now. I know we have one right now that owes us thirty thousand dollars. Right? That really changes our budget structure, structure, so there is a level of accountability we will be putting on the development community. I fully anticipated my mitigation impact section, it does say they might not like that at first. Um, so as long as we're aligned on the cost recovery goal, then I think we can navigate that. And then the last one that I'll just bring up is that, and I'll be doing a presentation on this in 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 next year, is we have Senate Bill fifty-two ninety. Which is the Local Project Review Act and there's a bunch of stuff that cities have to do. Um, to accommodate development timelines and there's a whole list of strategies that. Um, cities have to like, have to implement and one of those is cost recovery. So they actually say that they, developers want to be paying closer to the costs of their actual projects. And so this gets us there, right? When you're getting, paying for your actual costs, that gets us closer to that, that requirement. Um, and so, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a given a take, but I think that that's, that's aligned with what that law says. So I will pause there and see if there's any questions from.
Council, any questions?
So I noticed um on consultant fees, it's pass through plus ten percent, correct? And that's to cover our administrative. Yes, yeah, okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
Anyone else? Thank you, Selena. Okay, before us, council is the potential to approve the proposed resolution. Adopting the two thousand twenty-five. Oh, Dawn, sorry.
It's okay. I just want to point out on on page ten ninety-two of your packet. There's a placeholder there for the public works for the shopping cart fines. And as we brought that um to council in the last council meeting. Uh, that that would be the seventy-five dollars, that will be. Edited in here, added into this, but I just wanted to be that that was clear as this, as you're adopting that, since that was just a placeholder that was in your packet. Uh, since it was at the last council meeting, so that will be updated, but I at least wanted to bring that to your attention, so that's before you adopt that.
Thank you, Dawn. I'm gonna have to move, oh, I have my iPad, I didn't see you.
No worries, thank you.
All right, thanks, Dawn. All right, anybody else? Okay, uh, we counsel before us to to potentially approve the proposed resolution. Adopting the two thousand twenty-five fee schedule as presented, is counsel which take action?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, I. I I really appreciate all the work that you all, you always are on it and trying to figure out the best way to. To steward the the funds for this, for the city and the residents and I also can appreciate. If it. If it puts more of the the engineering onus on the the developers to help free up time, maybe nobody wants to get. Stuck with having to wait five or six months for their first round of comments from a jurisdiction because then it just. It delays projects and as things move forward and we we have a lot more construction going on, I could see that uh becoming a problem in the bottleneck. Um, and also, even even before I was on council, sitting in the. The audience, it was development pays for development, that was the common theme and I think we were trying to learn through that and um I appreciate the. The cost recovery for that um and and reevaluating it and having it more in alignment. That is the one part, but the whole fee schedule.
Thank you, Beth. Christina would like to speak to your second.
Sure. Um, I think as cities evolve, uh, some of the easier lands are developed and it really doesn't cost that much. Well, it costs, but it, when we get to a point at where where Covington is now, um, like you said. It, it, we really get to the difficult lands and they are expensive to develop. Um, you said exactly what I wanted to say, I mean, we've always been development pays for development, so we have to do what makes at least. The city break even, right? So I think this is in line with what we should do and it's fair and thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Is there anybody else wish to speak for against the motion? Right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-five fee schedule as presented. All those in favor state aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you very much. Next up is new business item number four, authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with King County. For jail services. Turn this over to Mark. Thank you, thanks for being here.
Of course, happy to be here. Um, as Mayor pointed out, this is the, in an interlocal agreement with King County. This is re-updating our jail services contract with King County and as council is aware, this is our secondary jail contract, our primary. Jail contracts with South Correctional Facility, SCORE. And that's where if we run into an overflow problem, then we send uh those who have been arrested to King County. Um, this was added after publication of the packet because we just received it on Friday, but we wanted to make sure we got it done because the current jail contract expires. On the thirty-first, so we want to make sure we do have secondary uh jail ILA in place with King County. Uh, into the new year. Um, the primary change that is in this ILA is that it's been the past practice of King County to. Potentially put booking restrictions in for what charges can they will accept inmates for. And so it during COVID, when things were a little more difficult for the county, they put in booking restrictions for certain misdemeanor crimes. In order to free up what was happening with the courts and with the jail. And so what the ILA does is it clarifies that county does retain discretion to put. Bu- booking restrictions in and I believe it was in November that they lifted in restrictions that were in place, but that's. Just codifying or clarifying in the ILA what has already existed and. That's the major change, but other than that, this is just an update to keep our secondary jail. Contract in place and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody have any questions, Mark? All right, thank you. Before us, council is potential to authorize the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement. With King County for jail services in substantial form as attached. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Debbie, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. Well, it's good that we're getting this done be- before the end of the the month. We certainly don't want to be stuck with not having a an overflow agreement, but. Um, thank you for putting the clarifications in there and um necessary for us to.
Thank you, Debbie. Joe would like to speak to your second.
Not today.
Okay, turn to anybody else wish to speak for against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with King County for jail services. In substantial form as attached. All those in favor state aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you very much. That concludes new business for this evening. Uh, looking at future agenda items, we do not have a council meeting for five weeks. Next one will be on Tuesday, January fourteenth. Uh, with interviews potentially at six. And then our council meeting, does council have anything they'd like to add to a future agenda for two thousand twenty-five? If not, we will have our summit at the end of January as well. Uh, with that, we will move into council staff comments. Uh, don't see Chief and Ethan. Welcome, Ethan.
Good evening, good, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, nothing from me, just wish everybody happy holidays and see everybody in the next year.
Thank you, Ethan. Dawn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Nothing tonight, uh, just echo Ethan's uh comment and having a wonderful holiday. Um, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and uh see you next year. Thanks.
Thank you, Dawn. Selena?
Um, just a couple of things for me tonight. Um, there is, now that we've got the comprehensive plan done, the next thing on the docket is climate. Action work, so in true planning form, I will probably be sending um you all through Regan some light reading for the holiday. Um, and just to set up, we did a, we did some stakeholder interviews, so it's the findings on that. And then we're gonna start having to have some discussions about greenhouse gases, so I'm just gonna give you some stuff to prep on that and then we'll strategize with Regan how to move forward. Um, so that's coming to you and then just lastly, thank you so much for the council's support um on the comprehensive plan. It's really great to have a system where the planning commission can really be thoughtful. And do what their volunteer expectations are around legislative actions and have a council that. Gives good questions and good feedback and really supports them. I I I see that as really a sense of gratitude for that and I know they really appreciate. They feel very aligned and that goes a long way, right? And so I will pass on um that we are moving on to that next phase tonight and I just also. Want to point out that Daphne Hernandez on our team, she's our long-range planner, she has done an immense amount of work of keeping this organized. Um, the comprehensive plan, um, she's, she's quiet, but she's mighty and um. Really just appreciate that, so it's been a lot of work over the last two years, so. Thank you all for that great recommendation tonight, we will be passing that on to PSRC. And have a great holiday.
Thank you, Selena. Casey?
Uh, just a couple of things, in case you hear from any businesses, last week I sent out about thirty-two hundred emails to folks to remind them. Business and occupation tax was going to be due January thirty-first. And I don't think my postcards that I sent out earlier really hit the people that actually did the work, but the emails did, so. I'm waiting through about, I think I'm down to about five hundred emails I still need to respond to, so just in case you hear some things from folks out in the business community. And I can tell by looking at our website that the popular links business and occupation tax info is at the top of the list, it's never been. Anywhere on the list. People are definitely clicking on my link that's in the email, so um, but that's great news, that's, that means it's getting out there and people are asking questions. And I'm answering them to the best of my ability and um, also the other note is, we hired our business. Patient tax person and they will start on January sixth. Um, she's coming to us uh with five years of experience from the Department of Revenue on the other side, so auditing the business and occupation tax. Uh, the forms, so it's great experience and we're super excited to have her, so that's it and other than that, have happy holidays, thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Mark?
Um, just briefly, um, as you saw in an email earlier today, um, King County Superior Court Judge blocked. The Kroger Albertson's merger, uh citing that it was a violation of the Washington State to Consumer Protection Act. And I wanted to thank council for its leadership and taking action to pass a resolution in opposition. And also to join in filing of an amicus brief, because at the hearing, the judge specifically recognized the city's concerns. And acknowledged that they. What role they played, he didn't say, but he did say that he took it into account and it was something that. That was part of his decision process, so thank you for doing that. Um, other than the end, uh, that follows up on an earlier decision from today out of federal court in Oregon. Where a federal judge also uh blocked the merger as well under federal constitutional grounds and statutory. Um, relief and other than that, we do have an executive session tonight under forty-two, three, zero, one, one, zero, sub one, sub little G. To review the performance of a public employee, but other than that, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Thank you for all of your policy guidance this year.
Thanks, Mark. Regan?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to share something with council and see if it's something you'd like to participate in. Uh, when I was in law school, I created a program for a class that I had called, and I, the program was learning democracy centers and. I shared it with several cities that um that implemented it, it was, it was a way to bridge gaps between. Um, divisive policy decisions and so I recently learned about Civic Genius, a a group that's. Doing some really similar uh work to that. And uh, the program that they run is called It's Your America. And a little bit about it that I got from them, it says the program is a deliberative democracy program that brings people. From a clock, from across the political spectrum, together to learn from experts about the key policy issues. Develop consensus solutions and create a strong enduring constituency for ongoing action. So it seemed like a really cool kind of one-time event that we could do uh to bring our community together. I thought it might be nice, uh, because we have so many shared uh issues as well, to combine with Maple Valley to have a little more critical mass. For an event like this, um, so Maple Valley is excited about it. I've reached out to uh Civic Genius and they're excited to do one of these here in the state of Washington. They have one or two scheduled, but that's, that's it that they've done in the state uh so far, they've done them throughout the United States. In a couple of uh different states, so anyway, I thought this would be a really cool issue, as we talked about some ideas that that. We could center this event around, the ones that rose to the top were uh public safety, of course, and then the impacts that. Traffic has to quality of life in our communities. And we can, we can uh noodle on that a little bit more and if you have any ideas, I'd I'd love to hear from those, from you on those, but just wanted to get a. Kind of gauge council, see if that's something you'd be interested in, we were looking maybe March, uh, something like that.
Just a quick question, I think, yeah, I I in theory like the idea, uh, could you just send us a little more on? But in general, yeah.
I I think it's around twenty-five hundred bucks that we'd split with Maple Valley, so.
Anybody else?
Can I just suggest affordable housing?
Yeah, absolutely.
And we have a thumbs up to go ahead and move.
Okay, thank you. Um, also wanted to let council know, um, we've been putting together a preliminary agenda for our summit next. Um, also wanted to let council know, um, we've been putting together a preliminary agenda for our summit next uh, January, next month. Uh, so uh, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and I met with Jim Reed, so he'll be reaching out to all of you in the next couple of weeks, so please return his calls, because the sooner you do that, the sooner we can put our agenda together. So.
Yeah, yeah, it's always, it's Joe. Because I always forget to call back.
That's why I just gave you a reminder.
Yeah, text me daily for the next couple of weeks.
I will. Uh, I also wanted to share with council, uh, we did a, a a little event here at City Hall to raise some food for the storehouse. We're able to collect five hundred and thirty-one pounds uh, that were donated this week. Yeah, great, great staff, as you know. Uh, also, uh, if you're interested, Santa Claus is visiting the Covington Library tomorrow. Pretty good Santa.
What time?
Five thirty.
Okay.
Sean, you can even sit on Santa's.
I won't, I don't want.
Jeff, you cannot, sorry. Anyway, that should be a lot of fun. It raises uh, quite a bit of money for friends of, of the library, so. And then just thank you for a wonderful year. It's just been a great twenty twenty-four, so thank you.
Thank you, Krista.
I want to echo that and just say thank you for a great twenty twenty-four and happy holidays.
Thank you, Krista. Joe?
So first I want to say happy birthday, Beth. Tomorrow I have my, have the last pick meeting of the year. Uh, it is rather boring. I will prob- I am going to be re-elected as vice chair because only myself uh, was nominated by the pick nominating committee, so if I lose, I'm just done for, I guess.
Make sure you vote for yourself.
Uh, that'll be the big thing, is voting for myself. Uh, Chris Roberts will, is also gonna be uh, reappointed as chair. So uh, he and I will be running pick for the next, uh, together for the next year, and then uh, we'll see what happens at this time next year. And then we will also be talking about the twenty twenty-five SCA legislative agenda, and then we will be voting on the board and committee appointments. Uh, if you applied for a board and, or a committee and got, you should have gotten an email saying that you've been re- you're gonna get reappointed or you're appointed to. Uh, you should have gotten that email. I do have the full list if you're curious. But there's a lot of new people on the boards, on a lot of the boards this year, so that's really interesting, really cool. Uh, other than that, uh, it's pretty common knowledge right now, but uh, I will be leaving my job teaching middle school at Saint Therese Catholic Academy at the end of this month, because I took a job teaching social studies and English at Canyon Ridge Middle School in Kent. I will be starting there January sixth. It is, uh, I'm on the personnel report for Kent School District for the board to vote on tomorrow, so it's pretty common knowledge now. Uh, please no one tell my students. I haven't told them yet, though. But, so with that, I'm uh, looking forward to the start of the new year, because it'll be another step in another direction for me, but it's gonna be one that's much closer to home. Uh, that said, Merry Christmas, happy holidays. I hope you all have a great winter and look forward to meeting you all again in the new year.
Thank you, Joe. Congratulations. Well deserved.
Thank you.
Uh, nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie?
Thank you. Um, last Wednesday night I attended the SCA meeting and the, the keynote speaker was the head of the Committee to Plan the World Cup in twenty twenty-six and just some um, little facts that, that might be um, as well, they're just fun facts. There'll be, uh, this is gonna be what they say, the, the highest volume of attendance and viewership ever for um, a World Cup. They expect thirty million viewers globally. It's gonna be, teams will be played against three countries. One is in South America, one's the US, and one's Canada. And within the US, it's Seattle and Portland. Um, in Seattle, they expect seven hundred and fifty thousand fans um, visitors to, to hit the Seattle area. You know, it's gonna be in June, uh, mid-June to mid-July, so it's gonna be right in the middle of the uh, cruise, cruise season and um, summer seafare, all of that. It's, you know, the traffic's gonna be crazy. But um, it's gonna bring a lot of people to some of the outer areas, because the hotels are gonna fill up in Seattle, so you know, they were talking about how many cities are gonna be impacted. I don't know, we don't really have any hotels. I don't know how many Airbnbs we have in town or how many might want to do a, a day excursion to Covington, but um, but we might get some, you never know. Everybody, but they don't have a bus to come down here, so.
We'll get a Vampol.
That's, that's it, yeah. Um, and then the Seattle Chamber spoke just briefly, and they're gonna start holding monthly webinars to share information for businesses, um, you know, what to expect and how to get, how to get their name out there. So I just thought that was interesting. And um, otherwise, I just wanna um, well, just thank everyone for a great year and um, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so just want to give a shout out to the city and council for that great tree lighting event we had. Um, it was a lot of fun, and it, it seemed to me like there was a larger crowd than last year, so I don't know if that's true or not, but uh, it's, I appreciate that it's just continuing to, to grow. Uh, I didn't make the ribbon cutting for Michael's, but I did go in that day, and that store is, is outstanding. Uh, it's nice to see that um, facility uh, repurposed, and the energy just in there on that day was, was great. There was a lot of people in there, and it just looked like a lot of uh, people, creative people, obviously. Um, so I, I think we're gonna see a different type of crowd coming to Covington and um, a more I don't know, you often go to drugstores, but I think it's a different, it's gonna be more of an injection into our, into our economy, so I'm, I'm excited about it, so. Uh, the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority had its um, most recent uh, board meeting last Wednesday. Um, couple of things, uh, we recognized um, one of the RFA residents with the chief's award for meritorious service for performing CPR on um, a person that had overdosed. Um, so uh, RFA does a great job in, in recognizing and elevating people to actually step up uh, to help their fellow citizens. Uh, there were also a number of promotions that night. Uh, I think I'd mentioned at a previous meeting in the past that um, Enam Claw had approached the RFA about potentially uh, having the RFA expand its service down to Enam Claw, so kind of like what they've done with Taquilla. Uh, the RFA didn't it's still a possibility. We don't think they're quite ready for that yet, but we did enter into a uh, did draft a executive service agreement to help provide them with executive level support and mentoring to help get their fire department into a position where um, they may be better uh, situated in, or incorporation into the RFA. Um, we also had a recap of the bomb cyclone and the impact on the service area. Uh, there were three hundred individual calls for service during that storm. And then uh, as of December first, uh, there've been overall forty-three thousand calls for service to the RFA, so just continues to see that number of calls to service go up, similar to like uh, our splashes in the, in the pool, just more and more people are, are calling. Um, the RFA also got a grant for a new hazmat trailer. Uh, and the board approved the purchase of a repurposed uh, pumper truck out of Ashland, Oregon. So, you know, kind of your typical odds and ends, but very important stuff that helps keep our community safe, so. Uh, happy holidays to all of you, um, and see you after the new year.
Thank you, Sean.
Yep.
Beth?
Um, we had our final joint recommendations committee meeting uh, last week um, for the year. Um, so those um, final recommendations that were made by King County staff that administer um, both federal and state funds, um, for primarily housing programs, but um, there are other um, other programs like the Community Development Block Grant funding, which if folks remember um, the bridge over Jenkins, at Jenkins Creek Park was uh, one of those projects that the city had received uh, funding for a long time ago, and we're also still part of the um, minor home repair program um, with C-TAC and Taquilla and Des Moines, so um, right now they're going to be cautiously looking at um, changes at the federal level and how that may or may not impact the amount of funding that, that program, that any of those programs get, um, in addition to potential state um, budget shortfalls. You know, that's gonna be really tight as they go into the biennium this year, so um, hopefully we, hopefully we won't see any um, changes to what we might be able to receive as a city, but um, we also created our uh, JRC um, legislative agenda uh, that will be submitted. I can send it out to y'all or have Krista or Regan send it out if y'all are interested in um, what that's about. Um, so on a positive note, yeah, that community uh, tree lighting event was awesome. We ran out of cookies at the Rotary booth. We had to go grab more. But so that was awesome. Um, and I know there's people, I've heard rumblings of, can't we make it like a holiday festival with them? You know, market. I'm like, well, we have a Makers Market coming up the, the Saturday. It'd be nice if they were all on one spot, but then we're not really at that level yet, but I think we probably will at some point. Um, so a lot of fun there. Thanks to the staff for putting that together. And um, what, we have Shop of the Cop this Saturday, um, at, at the Walmart here, and so I, I know I'll be there for a little bit and then going to Makers Market and Rees Across America, stuff going on this Saturday. Um, but it's nice to see how how our community comes together and our city supports folks that um, are in need and, and our veterans and trying to make our community better and as we grow. Uh, happy holidays, everybody. Thanks.
Thanks, Beth. Christina?
Hi. First off, thank you everyone for excusing me from the last meeting. Um, we're not in the bomb cyclone. And I I, I kind of like it when the power goes out, so I half missed it, but then I realized I have a baby, and that's not some I don't want to be at home without power with a baby. Otherwise, it would have been a little fun, so um, it's awesome to see how quickly our community covers how, and, and honestly, how willing neighbors are to help each other. Uh, if you, uh, like if you, I didn't have too much time, but the time, the little time that I got to scroll down neighborhood not neighborhood watch, but the neighborhood app. It was just full of gracious people, and it's nice to know that this is the community we live in. Um, in November, we, in November, we had our final skip meeting of the year. We're canceling the December meeting, because I believe it would have fallen very close to Christmas. Anyway, and where, where we discussed our twenty twenty-four final housing capital fund recommendations. In that, we are funding four locations, uh, one in, two in Burien, one in Kent, and one in Auburn totaling four hundred and six units total um, that Skip will be um, contributing to. The total fund amount was two point seven, seven uh, million dollars, and we're really excited to see that move forward, because like, like we said, this has been a stagnant train that finally like chug-a-chug-a, chug-a-chug, and I feel like it's finally getting moving and it's and I'm excited to see where we are next year and the year after that. Yeah, that's really nice. So um, thanks to Covington, uh, there's only a, a few cities that really did take um, the opportunity with the funds, the, the house bill funds to contribute to Skip, so that's, it's, it's nice to know that we don't have to take out of our, our general fund. Um, about six weeks ago, somebody walked into our home, took a few things while we were at home having dinner and walked out with some valuable possessions and um, what initially was a very frightening night put perspective on life um, and not on things. You know, when, when somebody takes really valuable things from you, it's, y- you, you get angry. But then you, when you realize that fifteen feet away was your entire family, and someone came and took those things, suddenly the, the attention shifts from our possessions and to the fact that my family's safe. And as I head into the season, I'm just really grateful, really extra grateful to have had a wake-up call that allowed me to reevaluate and reprioritize everything and to really realize that it's not about things. The things that we have, just we live in a consumer-based society. Um, they're replaceable. Some things are insured, but really that a- and the things that matter, nobody can take from us. And I think that's what was the biggest takeaway for me. Everyone here that shares this relationship professionally, obviously, but whether it's the council, whether it's our staff, I am just incredibly grateful for each and every one of you, because nobody can steal that from me. Nobody can take, you know, the true joy away. So as we head into Christmas, I just hope that's kind of at the forefront of our head, brains and minds and you know, we just talked to Darren, and a thought crossed my mind. I'm like, how, what, what are the numbers gonna look like in December? And will they be higher? Will they be lower? I hope it's lower, but I fear that it may be higher, and I'm just really blessed by each and every one of you. And I'm grateful for you, and Merry Christmas to y'all.
Thank you, Christina. Glad everybody's safe. Yes, the tree lighting was outstanding. I loved the layout. I sent an email. I don't know if it got out. But um, I like how it was laid out this year. Every year just keeps building and building, so it was very nice and nothing but positive comments throughout the whole evening. Uh, so thank you to the entire team for getting that done. The Michael's ribbon cutting, nineteen and a half years it's been since we've had a craft store in Covington.
I wonder how you know that number.
And those, so the ribbon that they had was large, and the scissors that um, Michelle, the store uh, manager who's been with Michael's for twenty-three years, um, actually remembers coming into my store when they were interested in coming to Covington before. But those scissors, um, I don't know if you've seen the pictures, but I showed them to my mom and she would have loved it, because she could have cut fabric in a third the time of what it took to, they were lar- and in Michelle's hands, the scissors look larger than she is. I mean, they are ma- large, and they're Fiskars brand, which is like the number one brand of fabric scissors. So they were, um, it was very nice, and it was a very good event. The very beautiful store, and it is brighter than the one down at South Center, uh, so.
Because it's in Covington.
Not only that, but they have lighting in this store.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we'll definitely be, that's where we, well, my girl's already been in there quite a bit. Uh, this weekend, uh, like Beth said, the Rees Across America, I'll be speaking at that. Uh, get there at eight-thirty. The event starts at nine. The Holiday Market at Saint John the Baptist um, is Saturday also. Uh, they will have the Dix of food truck there from eleven to three. Um, I'm told they don't do french fries. It's just burgers and shakes. Um, which is a bummer.
Are you saying they don't do french fries, so you can get them all, Jeff, or?
Well, I just, somebody advertised a huge thing of french fries, container to get fries in. So that'll be this, and then next Tuesday, if anyone's interested, the South Sound Chambers of Commerce Legislative Coalition, uh, I sit on the board for that. They are having their annual breakfast next Tuesday, December seventeenth um, at seven o'clock in the morning at Dave and Buster's. If you're interesting, there's still seats available. Um, in your email from the Covington Chamber is a link to sign up for that or uh, let Krista know. Um, and I believe the chamber might even have a few empty seats at their table if you're interested in showing up. But this year it'll be at Dave and Buster's, um, in one of their, uh, well, actually all three of their meeting rooms, so it'll be a lot easier to uh, get to. And uh, I will miss the Shop of the Cop. I have always enjoyed that. I forgot that they're both on the same weekend. And we don't want to clone me. That would be very scary. And we don't wanna clone me. That would be very scary. Um, but I wanna say thank you to Regan, our entire leadership team, our entire staff. This has been an amazing year. And uh it has just been an honor and a pleasure to represent the city of Covington, all of our residents. And thank you to each of our council members. I mean, everybody's done an awesome job and it's just I always look forward to coming to city council, coming to city hall and any of our events, whether it's through the chamber of the city. It's, it's just been amazing this year. So except, I think I'm gonna go on vacation mid-June to mid-July. That means all the hotels elsewhere should be empty. So um but no, it's been, it's been great. So thank you all and happy holidays. I hope everybody gets some time to relax and uh rest. If you're going away somewhere to be able to enjoy yourselves with family and or Mexico, you're gonna Mexico. I'm just going to B-Side for a night. Get away. That's what the girls wanna do for their Christmas presents. So with that, we will go into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed at city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. Seeing everybody jump up and run to the podium here in the audience, I will look online. Is there anybody online that would like to speak and address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody approach the podium and nobody online raising their hand, I will close public comment. We will go into an executive session to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three, zero, dot one, one, zero, subsection, subsection one, subsection little G for approximately
hour?
Yeah. An hour, so we will return at nine fifteen, at which time no further action will be taken. And with that, I hope everybody has a very Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays and thank you all very much. I'll come back out in an hour to close the meeting. Good evening. We have come back from our executive session. No further business will be taken. Happy holidays, everybody. This meeting is adjourned at nine sixteen.